I'm going to call to order the January 19th Business Meeting and ask the Administrator to please take the role.
Well, good morning Commissioners. We have Mr. Chris Story from County Council joining us today, and of course Mary Rathke, the Clerk to the Board. I'll go ahead and start with the role. Commissioner Reynolds.
I'm present.
Commissioner Humberson.
Present.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here.
With that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I will also announce the obvious, Commissioner Schrader is not here today. Before we begin, I want to announce that we have revised the agenda. We moved the Housing Authority Consent Agenda item as been moved to the County's Consent Agenda, Item A2. And so, as I mentioned earlier, we moved the Citizen Communication to the end. And right now, I'm going to announce that we are recessing as a Board of County Commissioners and convening as a Housing Authority Board for the next item. And with that, I also want to introduce Paul Reynolds, who's on the Housing Authority Board. And with that, I'm turning it over to you.
Okay, so I'll introduce this item. We have a public hearing to consider a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, otherwise known as TFR. It's a hearing on the issuance of private activity bonds for the development of the Rosewood Terrace apartment project. Go right ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rich Malloy. I'm the Asset Manager for the Housing Authority, sitting in for our Executive Director Chuck Ralphens today. This is a project, Rosewood Terrace is a project that we've been working on, starting going back to July 5th, if we recall as Commissioners. And as Mr. Krupp described, the thing that we need to do today is to hold a public hearing so citizens can comment on this project, which I'll talk about in just a moment. And then, subsequent, you will pass a resolution later as the elected Board. It's important to know that this action today, where we are in the project, this is the intent to issue bonds, this is not an approval to issue bonds. It's a preliminary step in what is happening, excuse me, what's happening in the project is next week, staff goes down to Salem to meet with the Private Activity Bond Board to get approval, to get an allocation of the bonds. At that point, we're ready to move forward with the due diligence to do the final underwriting and prepare for issuance of the bonds later this spring. Does that all make sense so far? That's the process.
Just so one clarification, we're only hearing today, we're not deciding today.
Correct. Yes, this is the hearing for people to comment on the project, and we're not actually issuing bonds. This is the intent to go forward with the due diligence per se.
Was that your presentation?
No, I got to tell you a little more about the project, okay? And to bring new Commissioners up to speed. So, Rosewood Terrace is a 212-unit affordable housing project financed with low-income housing tax credits and tax exempt bonds. This project is to meet the needs of, what is really workforce housing, peoples whose incomes are below 60% of the area median income. So, for example, for a family of four, that would be an income of about $35,000. A low-income housing tax credit program is a nationwide program that's been around since 1986. It's produced over 1.2 million housing units in this country, thousands of housing units within Oregon. So, it's a very typical structure. It is our main way to finance projects of this size for this particular population. So, the developer on the project is Petcor LLC. They are based out of Indiana. The Housing Authority's role in the project is we are part of the partnership. And as part of the partnership, the Housing Authority being in the deal allows the developer of the project to have a property tax exemption. It allows, and also allows, the Housing Authority to earn some cash flow. So, the Housing Authority will earn cash flow from this project. For information, we own another tax credit project called Eastern Bridge, which we earn cash flow off of that. That's been a very successful project. It's one of the ones that I manage. So, and then kind of the next step is getting, getting all of the due diligence done to go forward and getting the project finally approved. So, that's, that's the basics of the project. I can provide more detail if you would like.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, with that, all right, we'll move on to the public hearing. So, I open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify. I have one card. Brian Boyce, please join us and give us your name and where you live. You don't have to give your address, by the way.
Okay, I'm Brian Boyce, and I live on Clackamas River Drive in Oregon City. And I'm basically spoke, speaking in favor of this, but I also want to mention the enormity of the issues we have with housing in this country, with incomes dropping for the majority of people and the value of property increasing rapidly. We have a developing issue of potentially houselessness, but also affordability of housing. This will partially address that, but it's just a start. There's so much more that needs to be done. I do want to point out that there's a lot of both church groups and NGOs concerned with this issue that the county can work with to get more done. There's a church a few blocks from here that's putting in an acre to put in low-income housing, for instance, and they, they want to work with the county. They have been in contact with county staff on providing services, whereas they're going to provide land and the housing, probably tiny houses in this particular case, though there's many ways of approaching this. So, I encourage the Commission to move forward in contacting more organizations that want to work with them to get more done on the houseless and affordability issues that we are confronted with. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for testifying. Anyone else? Well, with that, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, issuance of private activity bonds for the development of the Rosewood Terrace apartment project.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, lights on. So, I, I've had a lot of consternation about this method of addressing the affordable housing issue. And myself, even yesterday, Commissioner Bernard and I spoke yesterday about this particular means of how we're getting this done. And Commissioner Reynolds, who sits on our Housing Authority Board, as we are so convened, has, you know, been pretty passionate in his expression that, you know, housing's important and, you know, there's a matter of dignity for those folks, and I remember those words well. It's the folks we're not serving that draws my concern here. It's the means that if we use this method, and we use this method solely, we will never accomplish the houselessness problem that we currently have. It's too expensive, it's not the fastest way to get it done, it's not the cheapest way to get it done, and we're few, we're serving too few, not enough. So, that's my issue. And the potential loss of tax dollars, property tax dollars that we could use for the growing demand and the growing need is being forgiven. So, it gives us less opportunity and less resources in the future to deal with it down the road. That is my concern. So, my legal question to our attorney today is that, is three votes here today adequate enough to carry this on to the next step?
I believe pursuant to the bylaws of the Housing Authority, you have to have four votes to move forward today.
That's, that gives me pause. That gives me pause. I really, I have not, it's not been demonstrated to me that there's a commitment to pursue those other avenues, and that there's a commitment and an effort underway that adequately gets to those needs. I've identified solutions for the last two years. They've fallen on deaf ears, and my concern is that we're not moving in that direction fast enough. And when this came before us the very first time, Commissioner Bernard had expressed interest in coming back with something that does not forgive those revenues, those tax revenues in the future, bring us back something that reflects that. I think he shares that same concern, we both share that same concern, and yet what we come back with is, is tens of millions of dollars of property tax forgiven over this period of time, which again, will impede our ability to serve those folks in the future. That's my concern.
And Paul's right, I have the same concerns, but I'm going to support today. We're a long way down the, through the process, but I will personally commit that we're, we need to convene a discussion about how we're going to do this differently. Giving up taxes, property taxes, all those years, and the county getting some, a revenue stream, I find challenging. And there are other ways to do it, and we just need to talk about it. But with that, any other discussion?
I think not.
Okay. So, let me see, what do we need to do?
One, one other question for legal staff. Should this, what's our next opportunity to address? As you mentioned, that this is not approval today for the bonding, my question earlier, so we're not, we were hearing today, we're not deciding today. So, what's the deciding point?
Yeah, may I answer that? Commissioner Savis, what we, the deciding point is when we move forward after the Private Activity Bond Committee meeting, but we do need approval of the resolution to move forward, to get Private Activity Bond approval to move forward. So, in other words, if we don't have the resolution approved and deliverable next Wednesday, then that could potentially kill the deal, or the Private Activity Bond Board may not allocate the bonds. Part of the, one of the main things in going to the Private Activity Bond Board is to show your readiness to proceed or your progress. So, here again, you know, this is, this is the way the tax credit program works. That's how it, how it goes, and this is the process. So, there is this preliminary phase where we do the due diligence, where we have an intent to issue bonds. With that resolution to intent to issue the bonds, we get the Private Activity Bond Board approval to move forward to do further due diligence on the project and actually issue the bonds later this spring.
Yeah, I got a question. So, I'm in a, I'm, I'm going to reluctantly vote for this today, but when it comes to the next round, in a week or two, or whatever, as you mentioned, alluded to, my vote will be based upon, that final decision will be based upon progress we've made. I know that the weather has caused some problems. I know that we've been trying to convene a staff meeting. I've talked, Commissioner Humberson, he's met with me, and Eugene on this issue, when we toured some facilities there. There's ways of doing this for, as low as or around the ballpark of, is $75,000 per unit, not $275,000 per unit. And to do it quicker, we can have $75,000 a unit built today with not, not even public money, with private money, this is public money here, and built faster and sooner and have housing people in a shorter amount of time, and yet we're spending $275,000 per unit approximately. And that, that to me is a shame, and that we're not meeting the immediate needs, and we can do it cheaper and with less tax dollars.
Commissioner?
I want to phrase Commissioner Savis's question a little differently. I just want to know, what is the point of no return at which the final decision is made, yes, we go forward this way, or we do not go forward, in simple terms?
In simple terms, the point of no return is at the point that the elected body approves issuance of the bonds, and we move forward with the project.
That answers the question. Thank you. The second thing, as I would join Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Savis on looking at the other alternatives. I see this as one piece of the puzzle, but not, certainly not the entire solution to the housing situation. Mr. Boyce spoke to the issue of partnerships with churches, among other organizations, for, for small houses. I believe we've identified a couple of pieces of property already that could follow the model that's used in Eugene, that would take care of some of it. But I don't think there's any single thing that's going to solve the entire problem. It's going to be a multi-phased approach. And I'll join you in trying to figure out how we move forward as quickly as possible on what they're doing down there in Eugene to get that next step off the ground and past the point of talking and actually getting it done.
Yeah, we have jurisdictions to the north and the south that have successfully done it, so government-
Let's do it.
-has been partners with that. I just don't know why it's taking so long here in Clackamas County to get it done, so.
Marijuana, that's why.
Took a lot of time.
Let me go ahead and address the concerns of the Board here, and I certainly appreciate Commissioner Savis's frustration and also impatience about being able to move forward. We have created, and this is in response to the Board's interest in this issue about houselessness and affordable housing, an administrators, houselessness and affordable housing strategy group, which consists of Commissioner Savis and Commissioner Schrader, as well as staff from Transportation and Development, and from Health, Housing and Human Services, and Public and Governmental Affairs. We actually had scheduled to convene our first meeting to begin the development of what would be a work program to be able to reach out on the full spectrum of tasks and opportunities that exist out there to move forward on this issue. And I've had a number of conversations with Commissioner Savis about some of the ideas that he's, he's referenced here this morning. But we have, because of the weather, we've rescheduled that meeting. It is now scheduled for Thursday of next week to move forward with. And we have on that particular agenda, a discussion about how we will move forward with the Veterans Shelter Project, and how we will develop what will be a more comprehensive work program that addresses the full spectrum of needs that are out there over time. This is a big, complex, difficult issue, and I certainly appreciate the comments that Mr. Boyce shared with you this morning about how to proceed. This is one piece of the package that, that will produce an element of housing, that will meet a particular critical need, but there's much more that needs to be done. And I want to give Commissioner Savis my assurance that we're going to move ahead on that.
As quickly as possible.
I also want to just mention that the former Chair and Commissioner supported this project, which I was surprised. And one of the reasons is the need, and this project, while it is expensive, will be done fairly rapidly. The challenge with a church, let's say, in Oregon City, is that the county can't just do it. They have to have city approval. So, we go through one phase, and then we go, we have to go to the, to the city to get approval. And I can tell you that we had another project that took Herculean effort to move forward. So, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. And thank you, Paul, for coming in today.
Thank you.
Nice to have met you, sir.
Nice to have met you, sir.
And with that, we'll adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Again, item, under the Housing Authority Consent Agenda has been moved to the County Consent Agenda, so that item was moved. And we're moving on to the public hearing, and Administrator?
Okay, yes, so our second public hearing this morning is to consider a board order that would approve a boundary change proposal, known as CL 16-011, the formation of a Malala Aquatic District. We have Mr. Ken Martin, who is our boundary change consultant, and Chris Story from County Council to speak to this item for you this morning.
Good morning Commissioners. This is a boundary proposal, but it's not identical to the annexation proposals that you typically see in your boroughs. This is a proposal that was initiated by the citizens. They went out, gathered signatures, and have submitted a petition to the Clerk, who has affirmed that an appropriate or sufficient number of valid signatures were submitted to propose creation of a new district. This new district would be coterminous with the boundaries of the Malala School District, and its intention is to levy a property tax for the purpose of supporting the operation and improvement of the Malala Aquatic Center. And as far, as far as the process and what this means, Mr. Ken Martin is here to share on that point.
This is, as I said, the school district boundary is the boundary of this district. So, this is about 18,000 people, and the proposal that they've put forward is a tax levy of 29 cents per thousand. If you choose to go forward with this, we are required by the statute to have a second public hearing, and following that public hearing, or at that public hearing, you would be asked to set this for election, and the election would be on the May election date. I believe you have a brief staff report on this, but that's basically the guts of it. I do want to report that I did have one contact from a property owner in the proposed area, who, Ron Gray, and he called me with some concerns about the, the formation of the district, felt that if he wanted his child to go swimming, that he could take that child someplace else, and that the property tax was too much of a burden to bear.
As far as process goes, so we have a vote today, in which you will tentatively approve. You can modify the proposal, or you can reject the proposal. If you reject the proposal, it ends. It doesn't go forward to an election. If you modify the proposal, the modified proposal would be considered at a future hearing date. If you approve it as proposed, it would be considered at that future hearing date, I believe February 9th has been scheduled with the Clerk.
Okay, so all we're deciding today is to put it on a, on a future agenda to determine whether it be put on a ballot. So, we are not enacting a 29 cent tax to anyone.
That's correct. That's right, and I want to affirm that as your role is to vet proposals that come forward to see whether or not they are worthy of voter consideration, to make sure that they are financially viable and reasonable in their proposals, and you get to exercise your judgment in making sure that it is a good fit in accomplishing the purposes that they propose, since this can be a citizen-initiated, but is ultimately the call of the citizens in their vote, not the Board, about whether or not a property tax will be imposed.
Okay, Commissioner Savis?
Just briefly, and this is more of a process issue, and I just want to get clarification now, because we have played, not played, but we have exercised different processes on these hearings, when we've had the presumption that there'll be a hearing both today and in the near future, and that there'll be public comment at both of those. And doing the size of the audience in limited time, I want to make sure that we give that opportunity at the second hearing for those who, first of all, could not be here today, and for those who are going to have limited time to speak here today as well. So, if I have concurrence that we can have that second hearing, and there can actually be public comment taken on this issue, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak. I have a few cards up here. Liz Carruthers and Jimmy Thompson, please join us up here. Introduce yourselves and where you live, and the next in line would be Lucy Allison Persley and Glenn Kirkpatrick. Thank you for coming today.
Good morning. My name is Liz Carruthers. I'm here as a representative of the Malala River School District Board of Directors.
Good morning. Mayor Jimmy Thompson, I'm here representing the City of Malala.
Thank you for coming.
So, as a member of the Malala River School Board, I, I suspect that my fellow Board members sent me here today to ask you to please approve the request that is before you and send it for a secondary hearing, because my daughter has been swimming in club for the last eight years, and I'm fairly familiar with a number of pools around the state and the culture around swimming and the value of swimming itself. Having visited a number of pools around the state, I can tell you that the one in Malala is one of the finest I've seen. It's not fancy, it's not spectacular, it's not over the top in its construction, but it's an eight-lane, 25-yard pool, and it's very pretty. But it's closed, and it's been that way for two years. Currently, our high school team is practicing in that facility, and obviously, we have a number of citizens here who have gone to a lot of work to gather signatures and would like to get this put on the ballot, and the school board supports that proposal. And we ask that you would please do so as well.
Great, thank you. Mayor?
On behalf of the City of Malala, I am here today to express the city's support to actually send this to the voters. We presently have an asset that is closed, a very nice facility. It was built top of the line back in 2004, I believe. And as was mentioned, it has been closed for two years. There's no other way to fund the pool. So, essentially, if this does not go forward to the voters, we're going to have to figure out how to do something different than the pool. But the, the construction of this, of the facility was actually approved by the voters. We have this action, while the city is the co-chief petitioners with the school district, I think it's important to recognize that this was actually citizen-led. So, so we had interested citizens within the Malala River School District that took up the banner of the pool and went out and collected several thousands of, of signatures to, to be able to put this petition before you guys today. So, I hope that you guys will support it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next would be Lucy and Glenn.
I wanted to show you quickly, but this is the facility, which we stayed in. I guess you haven't seen it. It's a beautiful facility, and so what we're asking, oh, I should-
You have to speak into the mic, or it doesn't get recorded. I mean, we can't hear it.
So, as I showed you pictures, my name is Lucy Allison Persley, and I live in Malala. I showed you pictures of the, of the district or the buildings to get across the idea that we have this asset, as Mr. Thompson alluded. And the people of the school district overall voted to, to build it and paid for, to build it. Historically, the way, the way it's gone is the city has run, was running the pool, and tax dollars from the city were going toward the operations. That became really a burden for, for the city, and we got into situations where there were several efforts to fund it differently, but the city could only put it forward to the cities, citizens of the city. So, the question has not gone to the right people, the people who built it. Do you want to pay for this? And there really hasn't been much of a mechanism for doing so. So, the idea of creating a district came about as, how can we get the right question to the right people? And we were concerned that the, the pool was shut down without really hearing from all the citizens involved who helped to pay for it. So, that's kind of the, the background on it. I wanted to say that it's very hard-won. We started it in 19, I guess the effort was started in 1950, before I moved to Malala, before I was born. And it was, I think that it was finally secured around 2000, and the facility was built in, around 2004, or opened. When I moved to Malala in 1997, there was a lot of sort of a sense of community trauma, like, you know how in Oregon City and Gladstone, everybody sort of knows High Rocks as a dangerous place, and people drown there? And in Malala, wagon wheel. We had this drowned, this place where people drowned. So, that was something I really noticed, is a kind of a community sense of trauma. Pools have very broad appeal. Kids learn to swim there, hundreds, maybe thousands. Swim teams, we have a high school swim team, as Ms. Carruthers alluded, and also, we had a barracuda swim team, and there's a kid who learned to swim in Malala, is, was on the barracudas team. He's in Colton, so he doesn't, he's a club swimmer now. He swims, he goes down to Salem and to Woodburn twice a day and swims, and he's looking to get national times, which is nice. And there's family and community recreation, and then there's jobs. It's right across the street from the high school, and all those lifeguards and staffers are high school kids, and so it's helpful in that way. And then, the point about why a special district, we did, working with the city and the school district, we worked together for about two years. We talked to probably a dozen different- We talked to probably a dozen different districts, took tours, you know, looked at things, talked to the YMCA, both the Columbia Wilamette and the Santee NY, weighed a whole bunch of different things, and together, after two years, came up with the conclusion that this is really the best interest.
Great.
And I guess I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Glenn?
Hi, my name's Glenn Kirkpatrick, and I live in Malala. And I'll be very brief. I probably collected more of the signatures than anybody else, and I just wanted to say that it was amazing how much the people, the community, want this. Sometimes when we'd go to community events, we'd have people four and five deep lined up to sign the petition, and I'm just saying that the community really wants this. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for coming today. So Aaron Devlin?
Last one. Okay. Then I have a question.
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you, all of you, for listening to All of Us. Lucy invited me here today because of my former role with OSU Extension Services as a research assistant on the Grow Healthy Kids and Communities Project. We did research in the community of Malala about opportunities for physical activity and nutrition for children and families. So there were a couple ways that our research supported the reopening of the Malala Pool or just having that physical activity resource in the community. First of all, one of the measurements that we took was physical activity of the kids in schools with pedometers, and we found that of the recommended from the CDC, sixty minutes of moderate to vigorous physical activity every day, children in school were getting about twenty minutes. So that supports the need for more physical activity resources, both within schools and outside of schools. Secondly, we did a participatory mapping project, and the handouts that were just passed to all of you show some of the results from that process. You can see maps of where all of the households in Malala are located and that concentration around the area where the pool is located. You can also see where the physical activity resources are located. One of the pages is the school resources, and then another is the other resources that are available. On these maps, you can see that there is a lack of low-cost physical activity resources that are targeted to children. That was something that came out of our research project specifically for Malala, and so it's another reason that we would be interested in supporting the pool, which was a low-cost resource for children. The third thing that came out of our research was because the grant supported the formation of a wellness committee at Malala Elementary Schools specifically. Their teachers and staff have spoken a lot about their priority for swimming lessons for kids, both for physical activity but also for safety in open waters, which was something that Lucy mentioned as well. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Question?
Yes. I was at the Malala Apple Festival last year, and there was a booth for the pool there, and it was real clear that there was a lot of folks that were very interested in this. I appreciate the fact that the citizens went out and actually gathered the petition to put this on the ballot, and that they did their political homework in making sure that their school district leadership and that their city leadership was on board. I think that citizens who take that kind of initiative ought to have the opportunity to put it to a vote to all of their community, so I'm very supportive of that. I do want to point out one thing. It's my understanding that compression will occur with respect to the property taxes. That means that it will have a, some kind of an impact on your fire department and the vector control district. And I just think people should be aware of that, because you're having to make value choices, and those are always difficult for us, balancing those things. But that said, I find myself very much in support of what you'd like to do. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the board order for boundary change proposal CL sixteen dash zero one one, formation of a Malala Aquatic District.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a border, a board order for a boundary change proposal CL sixteen dash oh one one, formation of Malala Aquatic District, and I look forward to voting for this, too. It's not dissimilar to library district. It's going to take all you guys to make sure this passes, and that's a lot of work. During the library district, there were literally hundreds of people everywhere, and that's why it passed, so I look forward to voting for this. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries? And do we need to... We need to identify the specific date?
The next hearing will be on February ninth, where we will be considering the final proposal. Again, the public will have the opportunity to provide public comment, and at that point, the board can decide to refer the matter to election. And I do want to clarify for everyone listening, because I didn't hear this actually mentioned, this new district will have an independently elected board. It is governed under ORS two sixty-six, so it will be residents within the boundary of the district who will be its governing body.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title only.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a cooperation agreement with Red Lodge Transition Services and the Housing and Community Development Division for the acquisition of residential property. And the next item is the one we move off of the Housing Authority Consent Agenda to the County Consent Agenda, its approval of a Tefra Resolution declaring Clackamas County's approval of the housing authority of Clackamas Counties, intent to issue revenue bonds for the development of the Rosewood Terrace Apartment Project.
If I can interject one moment, in moving the item from the Housing Authority Consent Agenda to the County Consent Agenda, we'll have to make some ministerial changes to correct for that. For example, it's on the Housing Authority letterhead, as currently noticed in the public meeting documents, and in the signature line presumes the Housing Authority would be signing it, which is not correct. It will be the county. So we'll make those changes for you, and I want to identify that on the record.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of a sub-recipient agreement with the Clackamas Service Center to implement a DEQ Materials Management Grant for improved food donation capacity at the Clackamas Service Center. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the contract with Harper Huff-Petersen Regellis for Construction Services of the Southeast Hundred and Twenty Second Avenue and Hundred and Thirty Second Avenue Sidewalk Connection Project. And approval of a contract with Traffic Ware Group for the Southeast Sunnyside Road Traffic Adaptive Signal Control Technology System. Under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Department of Disaster Management, approval of a fiscal year fifteen Urban Area Security Initiative Subrecipient Grant Agreement with Sunrise Water Authority. And approval of fiscal year seventeen State Homeland Security Grant Program Application to the State of Oregon for seven projects. And under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of Amendment Number Two with Metro related to recently conveyed Damascus Vogel property from Clackamas County. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Do any of the Commissioners want to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a comment about one of them, if I may.
Sure.
On the traffic one, I noticed a difference of over six hundred thousand dollars between the cost of the project and what's before us today, so I asked staff why that difference and why it was bifurcated, and apparently, the balance will come from unexpended funds someplace else, and staff are working on a funds transfer that will come before us in the future. And I just want to make sure that it's on the record for the public to know that if they, somebody else spotted that six hundred thousand dollar difference, that's the reason why, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for getting some clarification before we're sitting at this. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. What?
We haven't, we don't have a motion yet.
Yeah.
So I would move to approve the consent agenda amended with the addition of item A two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? I'd like to move things forward. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries? Thank you very much. And now we're going to go to the Citizen Communication section, and if you weren't in the room before, we had to move the consent, I mean, the Citizen Communication, because he has to leave by eleven, and he will watch the video, so if he gets up and leaves, you know why. We, of course, cannot make any decisions, because there will only be two of us, and that's no longer a meeting where we can make decisions, but we're here to listen. So with that, Bob Van Dyke and Sharon Salvagio, maybe?
Salvagio?
Salvagio? Over here. Please join us and tell us where you're from, and your name, and where you're from.
Commissioners, thanks for making time for this today. My name's Bob Van Dyke, and I work for a group called the Wild Salmon Center. I live at eighteen oh three Main Street in Forest Grove, Oregon, for twenty-plus years. I'm part of a bigger coalition, and we sent a letter to you about the Lynn County lawsuit, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about today. I respectfully request that you opt out of that lawsuit, and I guess I'd like to give you a couple reasons why. The core of the lawsuit says that state lands are to be managed to maximize timber revenue over all other values, and we just don't agree with that. And what I've seen from this county, you know, you've generally, on your own lands as well, tried to produce or follow some kind of balanced plan. I've seen you, that you've produced materials promoting tourism, and places like Mount Hood that are in your district, there are fisheries, obviously, in your county and also flowing off state lands, although you guys don't have a lot of state lands, there are state lands in Clatsop County and Tillamook County that are particularly important for our fisheries. So for us and my groups, the groups I work with, we'd like to see some kind of balanced plan. None of us have been litigating against the plan. I think what this lawsuit comes from is from a view that the particular interests, in particular the timber industry and some counties who are close to the timber industry, want the lands managed to produce logs and revenues over all other values. And none of us have any problem with timber harvest on state land, and, you know, my kids go to the Forest Grove School Districts for many years now, and I certainly know the need for school funding that we've got, and Forest Grove does get some school funding from the harvest. But I think what Oregon needs is some kind of balanced approach that doesn't put timber over all other values. So that's why I encourage you to opt out. You know, the reason I say the timber industry is behind this or wants this is because they are. They paid the lawyers to file the lawsuit. They put up the first hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I think, to get the lawsuit off the ground. A couple quick final points to make. If this judgment goes through, so let's just imagine that Lynn County wins, and there's a one-point-four billion-dollar judgment against the state. You guys don't have a lot of acres, I think seventy-five hundred acres or something like that, but you've got a lot of people and a lot of taxpayers in this district. So if you divide up that one-point-four billion, your taxpayers are going to be paying many, many millions more than you're going to get back in return from that seventy-five hundred dollars. And I know you've talked about getting the land back for yourself, and that makes, I understand why you'd think about that approach, but even if you get that land back, your taxpayers are still going to be paying the judgment that goes to Tillamook County and other counties that have filed in this lawsuit. So I think we all know the state doesn't have an extra one-point-four billion sitting around. So I guess I'd just say finally, I know my time is up. I'd be happy to talk or meet with any of you separately, or if you've got any questions for me now, I'd be happy to try to answer them. So thank you.
Commissioner Savas?
I don't have any questions, but I have some comments. So as, I think it's safe to say that as someone who has ran for office with timber money spent against me, I think I can establish that I am not in the pockets of any timber person or timber interest. So with that said, my understanding of this issue is that there are in this contract, which is really the center, failure abidance by this contract with the state and the counties, that the state standards are going to be abided by, period. So I don't, I'm not aware of, and maybe in the future you can show me where in the contract or where in the forest, state forest management practices, you feel that those interests, such as water quality and all those, because I've seen them, I mean, I think there's substantial protections in there for the environmental concerns and the end concerns of the recreational community that want to use these assets. So I totally respect that. I've been a water quality advocate myself, so I understand your interests and needs, but I don't see how that would be compromised, nor do I foresee perhaps a billion-dollar settlement in which statewide monies would be paying off the counties. I really see that the compromise here is manage it, manage these forests as the contract says, within those state forest practices and regs that protect those interests. And if we are so lucky to receive those lands back, our standards are higher, with higher protections, and better managed than what the state's doing. So frankly, I really think that if you really look at what our interests are, that I would think that you would be partners with us in that they would be logged, and those practices would be abided by, and especially here in Clackamas County.
So I'll comment on that. I served as the vice chair of the Forest Trust Lands Committee, and while I, I agree with you that in the contract, and if you go to those meetings, you'll hear every time, it's maximum production off those lands, and it, that's what it says, and that's the big line, it's maximum production. But I also am a firm believer in contracts. A contract's a contract. We'd be more than happy to take that land back and do a better job of it, but it's costing us millions, too. It's costing us, we used to pave our roads with that money. So I want, I'd love to get the money back, I mean, the land back. I don't want the money, but I want the land back, and that, I think we could do a fantastic job of producing revenue to pave our roads and help the schools, and at the same time, protect the environment. So that's my ultimate goal, but that's kind of where we're at. Yes, Commissioner?
Can I just ask one clarifying thing in respect? Because I just want to say that my word, my understanding is the wording is sustainable yield, maximum sustainable yield, not maximum yield. Maximum yield would be obliterating the entire stands, right? Every tree there is. It doesn't say that. It's maximum sustainable yield. We're logging half of the sustainable yield, which is one points, which is less than one point something percent of the stand. So you're talking maximum yield of the sustainable forest, which is one point some odd percent of the trees. So it's careful, the wording, just to say it's maximum yield is not true, as I understand it.
I can't tell you how many meetings I heard that exact word said a hundred times. Go ahead.
Is it okay for me to respond quickly?
You asked me really quick.
Yeah, I will be quick. I think a couple things. So I don't disagree, or I didn't mean at all to accuse that, you know, you guys were doing timbers interests or something like that. I just mean to point that that was the origin of the lawsuit that's underway now. I think there's some really basic information that's been incorrect that's been passed around. The narrative that's come from Roger Nyquist, in particular in part, and John DiLorenzo, the lawyer for the suit, is that before nineteen ninety-eight, there was a lot of revenue coming off these lands, and then in nineteen ninety-eight, the Board of Forests passed a greatest permanent value rule, and that that rule led to a decline in timber harvest and revenues, and that's simply false. It's false. If you look from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-eight, I just went and looked at your guys' numbers, you averaged a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. This is from ninety to ninety-eight, coming to Clackamas County. Since nineteen ninety-nine to the present, you've averaged five hundred and three thousand dollars a year. The, in Lynn County, for example, harvest tripled, tripled after nineteen ninety-eight on average. And I think what's happened is there's been a conflation of the real difference in federal land. No one argues that federal land, and I think they did use to pay the, you know, in Clackamas County, they did pay to pave the roads, right? A lot of money came out of the Mount Hood Forest. That revenues dropped precipitously and stayed down. On the state force plan, the state tried to make a balanced plan, which they did, and harvest went up and have stayed up. So there's just a basic, I think, misconception there, and obviously, I'd be happy to talk to you about this more offline or in a separate setting, but I do encourage you to take it up again. Thank you.
Ken?
I don't have a lot of time, so I'll make this quick. I did read the ten-point rebuttal to the lawsuit, as well as parts of the lawsuit itself, and I tend to support... as well as, um, parts of the lawsuit itself and I tend to support, um, your, your thinking on that in terms of, um, the disingenuousness of, of the harvest numbers. Okay, that said. Um, and I think I will, I'm going to find myself on a subcommittee of forestry issues, um, at the Association of Oregon Counties and I expect to be a countervailing voice, voice to what I heard a commissioner from another county say not too long ago and there is a wonderful stump of, under every tree. Uh, and I don't buy that. Okay. That said. I asked our forester, and we are only one of two counties that have an onboard forester and, and forest management plan, um, in, in this state. We significantly exceed the standards of the state in our forest harvest practice on the three thousand acres we currently own. And last harvest, I think, was one point eight percent of that total three thousand acres. Uh, I would encourage you to talk to our forester to look at our standards. I have it on an email someplace that they sent to me, but as you know, I have to leave shortly. I don't believe dropping out of the suit, um, will stop the suit, for starters. I think it'll, it's going to go forward anyway. And we would tend to lose our leverage on the comment that the other two gentlemen have made, which is, let's, I would like to see us get the land back into our control using our much better standards for forest harvesting and try to push the state to say to any of the other counties, if you want this land back and you want to manage it yourself, this is the standard you have to go to, not this one down here. Otherwise, we're going to keep it. We could set the standard in the state for how this should be done in a responsible way that protects the habitat and fisheries, et cetera, uh, and does not despoil the forest. So that's kind of how I've been trying to look at it. Um, I had another thought. Um, it has escaped me. I'm more than willing to sit down with you, um, next week after I get back from Corvallis to, uh, spend more time discussing it with you, um, and get more information from you. Uh, but that's the crux of my thinking on it and I wanted to share that with you at this point, okay?
Share.
And Lisa, I know you had a, 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 a point about this also and I will spend time with you if you wish. So.
Sharon?
I do have to go.
So you have five minutes.
I've got five min, I'll wait five more minutes.
Hi, hello, good morning, um, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Sharon Salvagio. Um, I'm a resident here in Clackamas County. I live in Westland. Um, and I'm here today, um, as a resident and also as the Healthy Wildlife and Water Program Director for the Northwest Center for Alternatives to Pesticides. Um, our organization has been around for forty years and we work, uh, to promote ecologically sound alternatives to pesticide use, um, protecting community and, and environmental health. Um, we also urge Clackamas County to opt out of the class action lawsuit brought by Lynn County. Um, we believe that Clackamas County residents deserve a decision based upon the thoughtful consideration of all the values, um, at stake for the county as a whole. Our primary reasons for asking you to opt out include that the state-owned forests, our understanding is that these issue, these forests at issue must be managed for the greatest permanent value. And as you know, um, these forest lands provide economic, environmental and public health benefits far beyond the financial gain um, that is realized from timber harvest under a maximum sustained yield approach, which usually is just calculated upon harvestable age and does not include old growth values. Um, so in addition to timber, state-owned forest lands also provide vital habitat for salmon and steelhead, um, six species of which exist in the Willamette Basin and I think four of those are in the Clackamas Sub Basin, listed under the Endangered Species Act. They're also a source of drinking water, supplying tens of thousands of Clackamas County residents, including my household, and support wildlife and recreation. And the Clackamas Sub Basin, um, you probably know this, but it's considered by experts to be a stronghold for the threatened spring, uh, Chinook salmon, one of only four in the Willamette Basin uh, that is left for this species, um, that has very low numbers and actually has a very high potential for extinction as is, um, stated in the recovery plan. So adopting, um, an industrial forest approach, that's the goal of Lynn County's suit, would accelerate clear-cut harvest on state-owned forest lands. Um, as we know, clear-cut forestry and regeneration is commonly practiced in Oregon, um, includes oil spraying of herbicides to eliminate the competition of native forest undergrowth, um, with small conifers. Um, three pesticides that are commonly used include atrazine, glyphosate and two-four D. Um, I've just finished, um, a long analysis of state data over the last six years and we know that the average annual aquatic concentration of atrazine already exceeds EPA's aquatic life benchmarks over the last six years in the Clackamas Sub Basin. And this is a chemical that's also linked to endocrine disruption. Glyphosate, another chemical that's commonly used, not just in forestry, but in, um, many, many scenarios, is one of the most commonly detected pesticides in the North Willamette. Uh, very quickly, I'll finish up. Um, the last pesticide that's commonly used, two-four D, has been determined by the National Marine Fisheries Service to jeopardize the continued existence of twenty-eight species of salmon and steelhead listed under the Endangered Species Act, including those that are present in the Clackamas Sub Basin. Um, I will skip over the rest of my testimony, which is in the letter that I submitted, um, but I thank you for considering this issue and, um, I urge you to make a responsible decision for Clackamas County residents. Thank you.
Ken?
I remembered the other point I wanted to share with you. Um, we are looking at, um, the timber harvest as a source of, of, um, raw material for, uh, cross-laminated timber, which is a building material we can use for multi-story buildings. If we do some changes in our zoning and, and whatnot like that, or.
Codes.
Codes, thank you very much. Um, and sourcing the lumber is our biggest problem right now, quite frankly. But the beauty of it is, is that it sequesters carbon. Unlike steel and concrete buildings, which are definitely not carbon neutral, they, uh, require the use of a great deal of petrochemicals to produce them and et cetera. So we're looking at that as a possibility, not only for sequestering carbon and, and using our timbers in a more responsible way, but also as an employment potential for the Pacific Northwest and Clackamas County in particular. So that is part of the, my personal thinking in how do we look at our forests? Um, do it sustainably and use the product in a more responsible manner than we have in the past. We have a lot less waste and a lot more carbon sequestration by, by doing something like that. So that's incorporated in my thinking on this issue. And I'll, I have to leave now, but I wanted to share that with you. And again, I would still like to talk with you in depth next week. So give our offices a call, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, just real quickly. So I, as a, um, person who's been abiding by and working, uh, strongly for both air quality and following federal air quality standards and water quality in the last sixteen years, um, I do know as a member, former member of the Regional Water Providers Consortium, that we were always trying to get the farming community, specifically the ag community, not treaty, not the, not the timber industry, to, uh, divulge what they're applying to their land so we could determine where the source of some of the pollutants that you identified are. And, um, knowing that the farming lobby is an extremely powerful lobby, near as I know, has, I don't think that's changed, that we don't really know the source of some of these chemicals that you cited. So I think the concern is where most of the pesticides, most of the, uh, yield comes from as far as ag in Clackamas County is from, from crops, not from trees. So, um, I would love to know, however, that if the state who's managing these forests is actually using these, are they divulging that? Um, I'm not aware that, that they're act, but to me, that would seem to be, um, a problem if the state who's managing things is actually using some of the, the materials that you're citing. So I'd love to know that and I think that'd be important maybe for us to get our, a grip of what the facts are here because I don't want to, we have county-managed lands. We have, what we're talking about here today was state-managed lands and we have federal lands and we have private lands as well. So, uh, we've kind of intermixed those, some of those things and application of some of those, um, things could be done on perhaps potentially any of those four, I imagine. I don't like to make sure where they're coming from exactly. Uh, but I think we need to clarify that because this is a very complex issue. It's taken me a long time to absorb all of it. But I think it's important for our staff who manages our forests to help identify, uh, what, what the facts are around this issue so that we hear testimony and we make decisions. We're making informed decisions. Okay, thank you.
Next up is Christopher Smith and Bob Reese.
Chair Bernard, I'd just like to identify for the, this is Chris Roy. I'd like to identify for the record that we are now recessed as the Board of County Commissioners and while you're accepting public testimony, you're not holding a public meeting anymore.
Thank you.
Uh, Chair Bernard, Commissioner Savas, thank you for staying late and listening to folks today. For the record, my name is Christopher Smith. I'm a Portland resident. Uh, but I'm here on behalf of the several thousand members and supporters of the Oregon Sierra Club. And, uh, I wish I could be more specific about that membership number, but frankly, over the last several months, our membership is skyrocketing faster than we can account for it. So.
Why?
I think that's a, a good sign for our organization and, uh, a show of groundswell support in this county for public lands and, um, the values that the Sierra Club represents. Uh, first of all, I'm pleased by the, the robust discussion here regarding the Lynn County State Forest lawsuit. Uh, we haven't seen that in all the counties, so that's refreshing. Uh, I'm also impressed by the creative solutions that you all are considering for your county forests, for state forests, for production of cross-laminated timber. That's also welcome to hear. Uh, I'm here to urge you to opt out of the Lynn County State Forest lawsuit. Um, and specifically, I want to touch on this idea that, um, being a part of this lawsuit earns you a seat at the table and maybe the ability to, uh, leverage certain solutions from the process. My understanding is that this lawsuit is about getting the maximum amount of timber from state forest lands. And while I recognize that being, uh, a part of the suit may give you some type of, uh, ability to settle and discuss, I don't think it will actually overcome the driving force behind the lawsuit, which is Lynn County's request of the state. Uh, so I would caution you on that. Uh, I think that a seat at the table is rather a seat at Lynn County's table and they would be driving that discussion. So, uh, I think you could take, uh, take the lead from Clatsop County, which, uh, wrote a very poignant statement recently when they opted out of this lawsuit and they actually have, uh, the most state forest timber revenue to gain. Um, they, while considering a seat at the table, they said they could not support a lawsuit that is a departure from a balanced forest management plan because that's what their county supports. And I'd be happy to pass on, uh, Commissioner Scott Lee's statement from that decision to you if you're interested. So again, I urge you to opt out of the lawsuit and, uh, thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. You've heard from me before. My name is Bob Reese at one-thirty Ogden Drive in Oregon City. Um, and I appreciate you hearing our concerns, uh, beforehand. I just wanted to reiterate a few things that, um, uh, Clack, if Clackamas County chooses to remain in the Lynn County lawsuit, it, uh, it shows there's primarily prioritizing maximization of timber harvest on publicly owned state lands. Casting aside what we feel, um, all other values, uh, that are incorporated into public state lands, including clean water and of course, um, most important to the membership of the Association of Northwest Steelheaders and the sport angling industry is salmon habitat. Um, Commissioner Savas has mentioned, uh, himself as a water quality advocate, uh, and highly knowledgeable in, in the, in the issue. Current standards on state forest lands are failing to meet the minimum temperature standards for the spawning and rearing of wild fish on all major north coast river systems. So with a mature forest that currently exists on the landscape, we still have Clean Water Act violations, uh, specifically related to temperatures. And due to the drought of twenty fifteen, we're going to see drastic cutbacks in, um, harvest opportunities for wild and hatchery salmon on the north coast because of those water quality violations. Um, I think, uh, again, uh, trying to keep my comments abbreviated, um, and as Chris had mentioned, Clackamas County had, uh, set a precedent in opting out of this lawsuit by, um, saying that there are other values that are important to our citizenry, particularly on the Lower Columbia River where Clatsop County exists. There's a robust, um, sport and commercial fishery that fuels that county as well as timber revenues. Um, collectively, sport fishing alone on the north coast is worth forty million dollars, just sport fishing alone. If you add in the wildlife viewing opportunities, which makes up a biggest portion of the outdoor recreational dollar that's expended on the north coast, along with shell fishing and hunting, that value increases to a hundred and forty million dollars. Those are real monies, uh, that represent a tremendous transfer of wealth from urban communities that we have here in the Portland metro area to those rural communities in both Clatsop and Tillamook. Your decision here sends a message that those values are, um, also appreciated here in Tillamook, uh, in Clackamas County. So thank you again for listening and, uh, happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Savas?
I just want to just comment that, um, Commissioner Humberston's comment about having a seat at the table allows us to deliver several messages. Um, and I think we can advocate for some of the things that we have in common here today that I've heard. And, um, my comments as far as water quality were specific to the, to the previous person's testimony in the letter they handed me citing the chemical issue. I am aware of the temperature issue, um, and, um, uh, and again, complex issue, but I was citing specifically, uh, her comments regarding the, uh, the, uh, chemicals.
Sure. Thank you. And maybe there'll be a future opportunity. We've presented this to other, um, other counties, uh, that specifically states a possible resolution that identifies, uh, Clackamas County as embracing the multi-use, multifaceted management strategy that we believe should be, um, also embraced for, uh, state forest management. Uh, asking the, possibly asking the county to sign, um, a resolution that, that calls for balanced forest management. Hopefully we get a chance to bring that to you in the future.
Great, thank you. Alan and Conrad?
Also, while they're coming up, uh, Chair, I just wanted to cite one other issue and that is that we didn't, um, volunteer ourselves into this lawsuit, that it was ordered by a judge into a class action lawsuit. So we were joined in as a, as contract, uh, as mentioned in this contractor arrangement with the state. So. Uh, and again, I see it as an opportunity to, um, get some change in several directions.
I'm Alan Lobdo and I came down from Brightwood. I'm a Clackamas County resident of the rural part, uh, forested part of, uh, I live along the Sandy River. I'm a member of the Sandy River Watershed Council, but I'm here representing myself, not the council. And I've worked a lot with Clackamas County in the past with the forester, with the forester on logging sales in our area. And I think Clackamas County does have a pretty good record. And I just, I am here to encourage you to opt out. I would, I'm a little worried about Lynn County and their maximum value. The idea of max, maximizing your, maximize sustained yield, whichever you want to say. But I think their idea is a lot different than our idea of a maximum sustained yield. There, most of the industrial forest land is on a forty-year rotation and I can't believe that that's really sustained yield, maybe sustained for a generation or two. But that's, it's, has terrific environmental consequences the way it's being carried out. And I know you spoke of water quality and stuff, so you know what I'm speaking about. So. I would really not like Clackamas County to be involved at all in that type. And I, I understand that's not where you're headed either, but I would encourage you for those reasons. And, and the fact that I think the forest is, I live right on the boundary of the National Hood, Mount Hood Forest and the highest value, I think, for the Mount Hood Forest as the residency and as management seems to be considering wildlife, clean water, recreation and timber, you know, sort of a balanced approach. And I would like to see that continue and Clackamas County as well. So. Anyway, for those reasons, I would encourage you to opt out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
My name is, uh, Conrad Gowell. I'm a resident of Portland. I work with the, the Native Fish Society here in Oregon City. Um, and I want to join Alan and Chris and Bob and, uh, Bob Van Dyke and Bob Reese in, uh, encouraging you to opt out. I will also, of the Lynn County lawsuit, I will also, um, posit a couple of questions to you. Um, the first of which is what does greatest permanent value actually mean to you? Um, for me, greatest permanent value means that those values can carry on indefinitely. And the way timber is currently managed, even on state forests, I, and under the, the restrictive logging regulations, I'm unsure that that will be, but be able to be carried on indefinitely. Um, another question that I have for you is, uh, kind of related to your fiduciary duties of the taxpayers of this county. While the, uh, you do stand to gain some revenue, um, paid to the counties through this lawsuit, you also stand to lose a lot because of the amount of land that Clackamas County owns relative to the other, um, counties. Uh, running some quick numbers, making a few, um, uh, easy assumptions. Uh, the expected revenue, um, would be fourteen million dollars, while the taxpayers would be liable for a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. And, uh, that fact alone, I think, should give pause and allow this decision. And that fact alone, I think, should give pause and allow this decision to have a public forum before the decision to remain in the lawsuit is formally granted. So I would encourage you to opt out in the coming week, before the deadline has expired to opt out. I would encourage you to have a public forum and discuss this, and ask the residents of this county what their values are relative to this suit. And that concludes my testimony. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Great, thank you very much. Lisa?
Everything's been covered. I got it on my list, so I guess that's been covered.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I just want to add, I don't think I could say that I've ever agreed with Lynn County on anything. I mean, seriously. And I don't support the lawsuit, but I also, one of my values is the importance of a contract. For me, if I sign a contract, I'm going to live and die by it. I am very challenged by what it says in the rules, and I totally disagree with Lynn County's assertions. But I also think that, you know, it's important that the state negotiate what they're willing to do, and we wouldn't be at the table if we didn't. And believe me, I'll do everything I possibly can to make sure Lynn County doesn't get what it wants. And that is considering the resolution, what Clackamas County is willing to do to preserve that land. Also, you know, we do, we do a great amount of work. We traded a piece of land to preserve it with another piece, or we're in the process of it, to make sure that folks up in the sandy, roter-dendering area had a place where they could recreate. And recreation means preserving the forest in general, but citing areas where they can recreate. So we did do that. And all I can say is that, well, we will certainly consider this, and I have, I have for months thought about this. And, but we'll talk amongst ourselves, the 25th is the deadline, and we'll make that decision soon. And I appreciate everybody for coming today, and I don't have a hearing to close since it's already closed, and there'll be more opportunities to talk. I see Martha's light on.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to mention that, again, I'm going to make sure, I see Gary Barth, who's our director, because has his hand up, who's the director for, oversees our county forest lands and so forth, and I know he's heard the comments here today, and I'm going to be pursuing an effort to identify what the facts are and look at some of the things that were cited here today, so that people understand exactly what we're talking about. I am aware that one comment of ours, as far as the age of the trees, that my understanding is we, there are trees that are well over 50, 60 years old in this, in this mix of discussion here. So, and they have been allowed to get there, and I don't know the details as to how or why they have not been logged. Maybe there's a good environmental reason why that's the case. But I do not profess to be fully informed on this, because it is quite complex, and I'm not the person who's been the liaison on the commission. That's been actually Commissioner Bernard, and I think Commissioner Smith in the past have put a lot of attention towards our, the boards and committees that oversee this. So I'd like to certainly be up to speed and make sure I'm well-informed. And I appreciate everyone bringing this to our attention, so thank you.
Just want to add one thing. Every time I drive down to Manzanete, where we have a beach house, I'm swearing as they drive through those forests in Tillamook County. At least they could do a better job hiding what they're doing. Thank you very much.